Yeah.
It was amazing.
Oh, thank you.
It took a lot of detail. It's just the overall. Thank you.
Well, we had it written much more simply to begin with, and we didn't have all the repetition. The attorney said that we had to make it very clear with the points we were trying to make. Anyway, I hope that we got the point across, and I hope that people who don't know about CTS understand it because it's so much information. I mean, I don't understand how somebody who doesn't know anything about this would understand everything. I think they'd get the concept of it, but people like yourselves who have been so close to it get it a lot more, obviously. Did you hug your hand up?
Oh, I was just going to ask to turn the TV on again.
Oh.
You did.
You did.
Okay.
Thanks.
One thing that wasn't mentioned, I know that we, at some point in this whole thing, were told that they admitted that they dumped barrels and buried barrels on the property that is now South Side.
Who admitted that, though?
I don't know.
That's the thing.
Somebody here.
We found a couple of people who said the same thing, but to actually go on air and say that, we need somebody who did the dumping. I mean, that's a huge allegation.
But I mean, something to continue looking.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm... That's why I put the stuff with the commissioners and NCDers saying, "Oh, it's easy to prove that they're doing all this stuff." Because remember back then, it seemed like, "Oh, yeah, that's no big deal. We can prove that." Well, now people aren't talking. The most we got from Bytnur, remember the guy who ran, the manager who ran the plant?
Mm-hmm.
The only thing that he would admit to is that they were using these concrete tanks to hold the TCE and that the TCE and the chemicals seeped through the concrete and went into the soil, and they realized that right after they got done doing business in Asheville, which is, which is an admission. It's saying, "Okay, hey, we knew that we did something wrong right after we closed up shop, so I guess it would beg the question, why didn't you clean it up?" Well, maybe because they weren't asked to. I don't know.
I've worked there 20 years. I've seen them rolling barrels out there.
Yeah, and we talked to you about that, but I need more than one person. You know, just one person saying it's not enough for us to go on air.
And nobody's showed up, but nobody's at work there.
Well, if you can locate the workers. Anyway, the big picture here is to try to get the story out so that the senators, congresspeople, I mean, all of people who are in positions to do something will do something. And that there will be something on record that's comprehensive, that tells the whole story in a nutshell in an hour and 15 minutes, where you can say, "Hey, this is undeniable. Here you go. Here's a CD. Here's everything." That's what we're trying to do.
Another point was the number of various onsite people.
On-site coordinators.
On-site coordinators from 2008, when this, you know, got really to a higher level, escalated to a higher level of interest. And the number of turnover on those people is ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
I know. That's what I've heard.
How much has been spent on all this testing when they could have cleaned it up 20 years ago?
Tate McQueen gave that number.
He gave that number to us, yeah.
Eight million, something, something, and 55 cents or something. I don't know what he said. He has a photographic memory. I don't know.
And then the other thing is the continuous pattern of passing the buck and cover-ups at the EPA.
Well, how can we pay those people? We had tanning.
Well, that's really the big story here, right?
Right.
I mean, what did CTS do wrong other than not cleaning it up when they could have, but nobody asked them to, right? That I know of. Nobody told them that they had to clean it up, right? I mean, as far as I know, I don't have any... I went through all the documents. There's nothing where the EPA said CTS has to clean this up. You know? So why would they?
They passed a law and told them to clean the dumping law, so why didn't they clean it up then?
But why didn't the EPA clean it up in 2002 when they issued the action memo greenlighting the funding to clean it up at that time? They put up a chain-link fence. That was their response to their action memo. That was their enforcement of the action memo, was to put up a chain-link fence later on. And, you know, I mean, they just dragged this thing on for so long. It's been 27 years since this plant closed. I mean, it's unbelievable.
The fence went up to 2007.
Right. But they dragged it on. That's their enforcement. Right? I mean, essentially.
How does a chain-link fence stop a running stream?
It doesn't.
Before the air.
Well, this land wasn't supposed to be sold. And the guy that was over that department that gave them the right to build was a supervisor from CTS, and he knew better.
Well, that's another story. We'll do that as an update. I mean, South Side Village is another whole story. That's why we didn't get into it, because it's another whole story.
And you tried to do another program about South Side Village?
Oh, if we're going to follow this, I mean, I'm going to first go to the Meadows, and I'll tell... Give me one second. Aaron?
Oh, I was just going to say something about, in front of South Side Village, the property that's up to sale right now for $1.8 million. Under a million, one of the...
Eight acres.
Eight acres.
Right. Well, that's a lot of money. And this is what I was going to say. That interview with Meadows was back in June? All right? So we're going to go to Meadows now, because he's watching it in DC on the computer, and see if he's standing behind everything that he said back then, because what I'm hearing is that he may have changed his mind or may not feel so passionate about the subject anymore. So my job is to hold him accountable and say, "Okay, here it is. You saw it. What are you going to do about it?" You know, Kay Hagan, Richard Burr, who wouldn't even get back to me, who was so involved in this years ago, why wouldn't he even return my emails or my phone calls? You know? So now that it's on tape, now that it's on video or whatever, there's no excuse for them not to respond, right?
Well, CTS has got more money than Iowa busts. Hell, are you going to call you back?
Well, I didn't expect CTS to, but I expect the EPA to give us a comment.
If they pay them too.
You got proof of that? I'd be happy to show it.
What about the municipal water? And why is CTS...
The grant is being signed by Wanda Green, and there's a holdup with that, so it's going to take another year.
Uh, that's because the EPA's involved, because if they lose control of the residents, then they lose control of the site.
They say they're having a problem getting the easements and other things, working with all the sides. I mean, it's just an ongoing problem. Why can't they just take care of it? You know, it just seems so simple.
Why? It's the bottom line.
The deal with the water is there are two pieces of property that they're trying to run it through their yards instead of going the proper way down the street. And Wanda Green is not able to work with the Division of Water Quality, so Monta has a meeting this week in the ID with the Division of Water Quality, and they're going to solve the problem one way or the other.
Awesome.
The speculation is they want to run it through people's yards, two, three people's yards, so they can save money by not repaving the street, which is stupid.
But the bottom line is, when it's such a big issue like this, there is a way to fast-track it, and why haven't they done it yet? I mean, they could have done this years ago, all of this stuff.
If Wanda Green lived there, it would have been done.
But why are we even talking about this story 27 years later?
This is federal.
That's the big question.
The EPA promised the water lines on July 6, 2011.
But why are they even saying...
You're right. I mean, it's all these years have gone by, and even then, when they made this promise to Patricia Penner and Sheila Martin, then they turned around and delivered rental hull-house filters instead of the water lines they promised. But you're right, this has been going, going for so long.
But why is Region 4 even saying that it's going to be at least five years now? They're doing more testing. Why are they even doing more testing? I mean, this is what is egregious and may have been overlooked in the story, that the EPA had been monitoring the TCE as it was going down further, further into the soil, right? Well, the groundwater is 50 feet below the surface, right? They had tracked it all the way down, and I brought up the point when, like, they hired Lockheed Martin and found out it was 34 feet, you know, it was inching its way closer. So they knew it was going to the groundwater. They had all these years, all these chances to remove the soil, and then it gets to the groundwater in the past year, and they're like, "Oh, well, I'm sorry. We can't do much about it now because it's in the water."
And then what she just said about the most recent testing, she's saying, "Oh, well, the rain is bringing it out from the soil. If it's not in the soil, how is it bringing it out?" Didn't she just say that?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and that was...
Well, they were all, they were, they wanted our test results that we did, and then, and it was a concern because it was almost three times higher than theirs from 2008. But then, once they get them, it's... Try to minimize... That they knew, and they knew, and they knew for so many years, and then it got into the groundwater, and now there's no plan to take it out of the groundwater, you know, as of yet. They have no plan for that. So it's like, what do you, what, did they wait on purpose for it to get in the groundwater? I don't know. But somebody needs to step in, you know, the president. I mean, somebody in his cabinet needs to step in and just say, "Enough's enough," because locally, nothing's happening.
What are they getting paid to do? What are they getting paid for?
Who?
But even here?
That's the big question.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Mike, one question. With Mark Meadows getting this new position with the UN, and I'm not sure, is he still retaining as our representative?
Yes, he is.
But he, I mean, time-wise, you know, he may not be much help.
I'm going to go to Mark Meadows as soon as I can to see if he still feels the same way. I mean, that's all I can do.
Well, all of us can call the office and contact. Maybe that's what we need to... Everybody in here knows it, but let's not do it all at once, but let's just do it. I mean...
All right. Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that's what you have to do, is you have to contact these people. This is what I'm going to do. I'm live at 6 o'clock from here, and you're not live at 6, right? Okay. I need some people to stay for the 6 o'clock live shot. I know that a lot of you need to go right now, but, you know, I need a few people to stay because I need to interview live and show a couple of people here. I mean, if you need to leave, just leave, obviously, but I really don't want to let this go. I mean, I don't want it to just become something that nobody else brings up again. You know, I want people to contact Meadows, because he's the one who went on camera. He was all gung ho about this thing, so maybe he still is. I don't know, but let's find out. Let's see if he can do anything, right?
Do you have a second before you go out and talk about from the community's perspective?
Yeah, I mean, you're going to do your thing, right? I mean, I'm live for 20, 35 minutes.
Whatever's going to be.
Yeah. I'm going to do a live interview with a couple of people. So Tate's going to come up here and just give you an update on what's going on right now, and we're going to continue doing updates here, but I hope that it was effective. I have no idea if it was or not. Do you have a couple of really quick questions?
How does one of my future members try to...
Oh, hey, how you doing?
I appreciate it so much.
Well, thank you.
I feel like you really took it personally.
Thank you so much.
Now, that's the point. You did so much work with this. How long did Tate put the whole...
Six months.
When did you start?
Six months.
Six months?
Yeah. John and I worked on it for six months. I mean, we had to work on other stories too, but this was what we worked on the most. I mean, yeah. I mean, of course, people like, you know, Tate helped us a lot, a lot, a lot. Barry, you know, Aaron, everybody is a big part of all this. Don Yeltsin, I mean, all of these people are a big part of this story that I'm not mentioning. And I'm sorry if I don't mention your name, but, you know, we got a lot of help.
Just one last thing, too. When the building was taken down, I happened to be there, and I had my camera, took a ton of pictures, and the guys who were working in this contaminated zone were sitting in vehicles, and they had, you know, big, well, I don't know what the sign, what the name of the truck or the vehicles are. But anyway, they were bringing in all the walls. Dust was just rising. It was a huge mess, and they had no protection from their, for their own safety. So whoever, those poor suckers, pardon my expression, who broke down the building probably had quite a contamination that they were inhaling, and nobody seemed to care about that either.
Did you, did you guys lobby for the building to be destroyed? Was there any way to preserve the evidence of the concrete being dissolved away in the trenches? Now it was off...
I mean, they, I mean, they tore down the traditional way. I mean, they brought in...
No, but I mean, before it was torn down, because they had preserved it to show the evidence?
Photographs, and they did.
But we didn't know about all that before.
Is the slab still there?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Mike, I just want to say how much I really appreciate all you've done, and a lot of people don't know that John was out there before daylight some mornings, and you were out there all kinds of day, and know you spent many, many hours on this. I think with this broadcast, might be, and I think for sure it will be, a change for our lives and other people in the community, and I just would like to express our thanks from the bottom of my heart, and everybody that has helped. I can't believe you covered so much in an hour of this. To me, it's really plain, maybe not to some people, but isn't it odd for anybody that has watched this tonight?
Well, you lived it, and if we helped to give a little bit of hope, at least we're doing something, you know? I mean, I'm not saying we're going to get results. I don't know what's going to happen, but we're going to continue to do updates to see if we can get action. That's all we can promise, really.
Hold our senators' feet to the fire, everybody. We've got two senators in this state. The EPA needs to be held accountable.
Agreed.
And all your senators, write them, email them, make them respond.
My business cards, I'm just going to leave on the table here if anybody wants them. If anybody has tips or information, any follow-ups?
You know, if we could get it on YouTube, take you some...
It'll be on WLOS's website.
Right, and then try to connect it to some environmental groups.
Yep. I mean, there's going to be a stream of the meeting afterwards. Just real quickly, as far as what you've seen and the fact that this is the first time that any of us have seen the finished product and the amount of work that went into it and the risk that WLOS took and their news director and so many of their reporters who have worked on it over the years in conjunction with print media like the Mountain Express, who really did some groundbreaking work, you know, this is more or less the culmination of that. I think clearly what you've seen is the need for two cleanups, or one cleanup and one clean-out. You've got to clean up the source, which by now, if you've all understood, they said that it was very complicated and it's fractured bedrock, so they don't have a way to clean it up. They allow it to get in the groundwater. It's gone. If they're talking three to five years, that's three to five years of further migration. What about the people that are three to five years distant? Who's going to warn them and who'll take care of them? This is the same thing. It's like being in the movie Groundhog Day. The clean-out has to be the officials that did this because they have made a cottage industry out of sampling with no return on the investment for the taxpayers, with clearly the oversight being and residing with our elected officials, who are elected not to serve corporate interests, but are elected to serve the people's welfare first and foremost. And when people are drawing their water supply off of contaminated wells or having to go to the length of a garden hose to have their water supply, there's something tragically wrong with that picture in this country. And so what we're asking for people to do is to understand that Mike's work is going to open a Pandora's box because it scratched well, well into the surface. You got under the slab of this story. There are still other issues that EPA didn't want to talk about, and this is the critical part. If you think that this is the only community that's been treated like this, then everything we've worked for is for a loss, because so many people have already lost. There's nothing we can do to make people well. There's nothing we can do to bring people back that have died. But there is something we can do to protect those in harm's way in the future by making sure that the people who have been on this site and been promoted, who have matriculated through the leadership at EPA Region 4, are held accountable, and that they, if necessary, they face the bright lights of an investigation. I'll just say one last thing. They kept, they kept referring to the fact that there's an ongoing investigation. You know who's doing the investigation?
Themselves.
EPA's Office of Inspector General. We need the Federal Bureau of Investigation looking into this, because despite the fact that there's supposed to be a firewall to protect internal affairs type of investigations, we need the FBI involved because of all the implication that Mike and John and the rest of WLOS and before that, Mountain Express and others have been shedding light on. But, you know, I think to be fair, you're looking at the result of six months' worth of work, and these other outlets, including WLOS, they simply haven't had the time or the resources to invest like that. And when you have one, you know, reporter on the shoulders of other reporters and the John Kirkleys and Katie Daniels and all the other people that have worked on this, this is what happens with six months of time invested. Then you can actually see what's happened. And we are not going to paint with a broad brush the good people at EPA that do their jobs humbly and with integrity. We're also not going to stand on the sideline and be, you know, glorified cheerleaders. They need to be held accountable. So I don't know how you clean it up. They don't know how they're going to clean it up. At the end of the day, the Rice's need to be moved. Period. Relocated and compensated properly. The federal government can find $25 billion to fund a shutdown, but they can't find a little bit of money to get the Rice's and the Robinsons taken care of and the other people who have had to live this every day of their lives. And the other, the other people, now that we're learning, 50 non-Hodgkin lymphoma cases within a mile of the site. This is, you know, not how it's going to be, and this is what we're going to fight for until the very end. So, you know, there are a lot of people that are involved with this, and, you know, people do the best they can, but all of us have jobs, all of us have lives, all of us have families, and, you know, it goes back to the basic premise of how we're raised, which is to do the right thing, even if it is the hardest thing to do. You do the right thing. So, you know, once again, we're going to renew our call for congressional hearings. We're going to change our call for investigation from the FBI, and we're also going to be looking at asking Roy Cooper to enforce the state subpoenas that were served on four U.S. EPA officials, which was a historic event that had never happened before. And we're going to ask that all of these things move forward to protect other people. I don't know that we have an answer for cleaning this up. What Mike brought up is for year after year after year, they did not do what they were supposed to do, which was address the soil. The answer to your question about how much money did they spend on testing, the total cost that was projected to remove the soil that was contaminated was between $4.9 and $5.5 million and would have taken eight months max. The system that they put in was designed to last 24 to 30 months, the SVE system. It was going to cost less than $550,000. I think you can see who got the better end of the deal. The corporation did at the expense of the people. So that's where we are today, and, you know, it's a struggle that's going to continue.
Did you talk about what you're going to do next with this? Going to go to...
Yeah, I mean, on Friday, I'll be in Washington DC, and I'll be going to the offices of the congressmen, and not just the ones that represent the 10th and the 11th, but also those that are on the House Oversight Committee. The time for the gains that we've been forced to endure is over. No one should have to go through this, not in this country. I mean, those of us that teach, I mean, that's what we spend every day doing, especially in the humanities and in, it's a great word, humanities, but in U.S. history and civics and economics. Your civic rights shouldn't be trumped by other people's economic ability. So I'm just asking for you guys to stay with us and do what you can do with the time that you have to do it. Yes, sir?
Do you have a Facebook page?
We do. I'm glad you asked that. CleanCTSinfo.
Also, they just, Ash Vegas just started Burying Secrets, which is a website now.
Yep, and Ash Vegas has got a blog, and there's another group, Clean Blog Asheville. Perfect. And so Blog Asheville and also Clean CTS of Asheville is the other group. Yes.
I'm just curious, Mike, what are they doing with the $50,000 that you're giving to...
I can't, I can't answer that. I can cite for you verbatim things like Page 8 of a file that said the SVE system was not designed for the geological conditions at that site, that that was in 1992, and they knew since 1992 you wouldn't put a SVE system for dealing with contaminants. And there's probably some environmentalists or folks from an environmental group in here. They will be able to tell you that in packed clay, you can't use an SVE system with any efficacy, especially if you mix the waste with lesser volatility waste. So as far as grants and things like that, that's available to anybody. We were offered, our group was offered a $50,000 grant in January of 2011, and we've refused because on Page 46 of 61 of the administrative order on consent, it says that the money's coming from CTS. So we didn't want the money.
But somebody had the money.
May I, I mean, sir?
You wouldn't have gotten the show.
Well, you know, it's just, it's, it, it, look, our community's as fractured as the bedrock, and, you know, that's something that we should all be working towards healing. And I think that when situations are raw like this, it can sometimes cause people to work themselves away from who they are, and I'm just as guilty as the next person. So all I want you to know is, is that with everybody else, we've been working for the welfare of our community and trying to defend our own families, and I think it's shameful that we have to defend them against people whose mandate it is to take care of the human health and the environment. I think it's shameful that we haven't had the type of treatment that is befitting working-class people in western North Carolina, and I think it's going to be equally shameful if those that are elected to represent us turn their backs on us, because we are all going to be watching what they do next.
So we need to call them before you get there, so that when you get there, they have gotten bombarded with the cars.
We'll, we'll post the contact information on the Clean CTS Info site for the various congressmen and senators with oversight. Yes?
As of, as of this point right now, what's the furthest out that something is tested or has been tested?
As far as we know, it would be the...
What's the question? I haven't heard.
How far out is the most? As far as we know, with regard to connecting it to CTS, that would be the Oak subdivision, which is extensive, a mile or so, from CTS itself. And, you know, there were hundreds of thousands of dollars that went into a study to confirm that that was a link between CTS, the TCE, CTS and what was found in the Oaks neighborhood. The problem we have, I mean, this is just an ancillary deal, but when we looked at the field logbook notes for the samplings that were done in 2007 and 2008 and into 2009, many of the homes where the street addresses were taken for the sampling don't match the GPS coordinates that they took at the wellhead itself. So we're not really sure who was testing at what levels or if they were even testing at all positive. Yes. So, you know, it's like they said, it's almost like intentionally, almost like it was intentionally done to screw up a handshake.
That's a repetitive pattern.
It is. And all the while, this contaminant continues to work its way downward as was predicted, so.
Speaking of that, you know, in the past, we've heard things thrown out, that this is in the groundwater at Crow Fields and that it's headed toward the Ramble. I mean, I've heard this mentioned, but, I mean, do we have any proof? Because, you know, money talks, and paying people in the Ramble won't prevent it from getting to their place.
Unfortunately or fortunately, the proof is in the sampling results and the sampling plans. So if you, if you sampled it on a, on a one side of a two-sided slope to make it appear that the source of contaminant is migrating onto the adjacent property, which is the rice property, so that they become the beneficiaries of the source itself, and you didn't test on the other side of that slope, then you're leaving people in harm's way. We do know that the Mountain Express tested, you know, about a half a mile downstream, heading away from the rice property, away from CTS towards Sweeten Creek, and the levels exceeded the machine's calibration. I think they were just in excess of 600 parts per billion, and that was in 2007, and that was Rebecca Bowe's piece called Fail Safe. So, yes, ma'am.
But now, when the EPA came out to our house, and after they found the contamination, they also came back, and they did some kind of thing where they drilled down into the rock, because our well...
Nice to talk to you.
Yeah, our well was like 500 feet deep or something. And they said there was absolutely no doubt, it was 100% conclusive, that our water, our well, when the pump would turn on, would pull straight from that CTS plant into our well.
And you're, you're on Chapel Road Church Road, which means you're, I guess, about four and a half, a point four miles from the plant itself. That was the big concern. I mean, why would you hook up part of the community within a mile, especially during a, down a projected pathway?
Well, now that...
To city water, and not the rest of us.
Now that we're not using our well, it seems like that...
It's going on down the lobe.
It's just gonna go down to the...
Well, and the Oaks, you know, are on city water, and that's in large part due to the organization that the folks in the Oaks had, along with the rest of the community. We just wanted to know, why didn't that, why didn't they run the water lines across the street into my neighborhood, you know, where the Murphys are, and where I live with my family. We've had four emergency removal events since 2010.
It's okay, they tested.
But they come back and test, and then say, you know, our last test reveals that...
They tested till they hit it right.
They test it repeatedly, five times in a week, to make sure that it's tested out.
I don't think those, there are people in this room that have experienced a knock on the door, and, you know, they're told, cease and desist on all water use. And if you're pregnant, or you're, you have a newborn, or, you know, you're making... I mean, that's just really sinister. Yes, ma'am?
Um, when this came out in July, there was some discussion in, in Mountain Express, and I'm not sure what other news media, but the question kept coming up, why has not the city or the county just run water to these people? And one of the city council members said that there was the opportunity was there, and that the residents turned it down.
I can answer that. I'll be happy to answer that. I've talked with many of the representatives who all seem to do and say the same thing. Problem is, is they never offered the residents municipal water, ever. I'm, I'm one of the 120 homes, and when I was, I was actually told that by a political representative. And that's what she said, well, you were offered water, and you refused it. And that's what I said to her, no ma'am, I was never offered water, no one in my neighborhood was offered water. That's the excuse that I've given for many years, so that they can say, we, we offered, they just didn't want it. That is a lot.
Just one second, Tate was gonna tell you, there's another group of people coming in here. And before y'all leave, I just need, I'd like to have at least five of you stay behind for my live shot at six. And also, my business cards are right there. I'd like to hear as to what I do next for my next update, because I will be doing lots and lots and lots of updates.
So, what do you want to break out, what to do next? If you can lay a comment on that thing somehow on President's desk, because he is the head, he points the heads at the EPA. This is a political problem. One of the experts that talked to this group way back, somebody asked him, why is his site in California, his CTS site, his site not? He said, it's politics.
Well, if I can't get anything from the local guys, I'll go up the chain as high as I have to.
Right. Stay in touch, be on the Facebook page, or pages.